Life call meeting ordered, the Jackson County Commission Work Session, January 3rd, 2018. First we need to have roll call, Mr. Manning.
District 1, Mr. Guthrie.
Present.
District 2, Mr. Bennett.
Present.
District 3, Ms. Gilbert.
Present.
District 4, Mr. Sis.
Present.
Chairman also present.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Now we have the indication, Mr. Arnold, would you abide place?
My gracious heavens, Father, Lord, we thank you for this year that we're going into, Lord, we thank you for all your blessings throughout the past year, Lord, and we just pray that you just give us patience and understanding, Lord, we pray that you bless this county commission, Lord, with all the decisions they make, Lord, you just watch over them. Lord, we thank you for this wonderful county that you've given us, and, Lord, we just, as we're doing this proceeding today, Lord, we pray that you just bless us with knowledge and guidance and watch over us in this in Christ's name.
Amen.
Live for the faith. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item we have is approval for the attendance for the daddy's work session. Do we have a motion to?
On motion.
Do we have a motion, we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Arnold, if I could say aye.
Aye.
Or opposed, say no. For our discussion items from the commission, the first thing that we have is community corrections. And this was an item that goes back a month or so, it was just understood at that time that this will be brought up at the first work session of the new year.
Yeah, I'm pretty much for table that, we got others waiting on that, he's opinion and what's coming in. We'll put that down about me.
Okay, alright. The next item that we have is county insurance, and I think you will have a quote in your packet from the ACCA and the Travelers, which Manning has done, he's some extensive research on this, and if you have any questions, you might want to refer them to Mr. Manning.
Okay, there's not a liability number for Travelers?
No, they didn't, they don't quote, have not been able to quote with the liability section.
Okay, is the auto and the property that ACC always, those that we want to put together if we want them live?
Right, they want the property in, and all of this, really, they want all of that to do.
Okay.
Right. And we had never quoted the liability package since it's through the agency, the ACCA.
Okay.
And the main thing that I just pointed out, highlighted on there, is when you look at the information that's there, and then made a note of the safety bonuses, longevity bonus dividends that we get, put it in a little box, then we can see what we've been getting discounts in the last three fiscal years there. And, of course, that's not factored in through the rates up there, that's just, we get those paid for us each year.
So the other ones have had a chance to make a quote on liability for this, didn't want to come forward?
No, they've never even quoted that one with everyone else. It should be a bad idea maybe to do that, but I think the issue is that nobody can really calculate the rate through their state. If you're familiar with what happened on the workers' comp, you know, several years ago, and it all went into the state fund, workers' comp rates just dropped dramatically, you know, on the same group.
In this, also, you get a longevity bonus, and it's like three years.
Yes, sir, it's, the way the longevity bonus works is each year you sign up for the liability worker comp package, you do a three-year election at that time, and I think we probably approved that in this past year for another three-year time frame, and at the end of the three years, it's when they pay the longevity bonus based on the performance of the funds and, you know, different factors they take into consideration. The last longevity bonus was last year, it was twenty-three thousand five ninety-five, they know that for you.
Under current 2017-18, on safety, they pay it quarterly.
They pay that once a year.
Once a year.
All we got.
In 2016-17, is that number there?
Right, that's the longevity bonus, that's the elastic out the side of that, that was included in that year. That's why it's a lot more than one year.
Normally, the safety bonus is fifteen thousand plus the dividend on the what money's in that fund is usually around twenty-three, or something like that. Some years it's more than that.
What does that base that?
On the safety bonus, you get, you got that ten-count criteria that you've got to follow through to get to fifteen, we've been lucky enough since the start to be able to follow through with that. And then the other, it's just what money that...
How the funds all perform and when they calculate.
How much money it makes.
Right.
It can vary from year to year.
It does, it'll vary every year. The safety discounts are seventy-five hundred and seventy-five hundred.
Yeah.
For each fund. And on the property insurance that ACCA just got in last year, this is just the second year, so they've not had any time to evaluate the performance, and that's just gonna take two or three years, but in talking with the person that heads that state agency, they're planning on doing the same format with a safety bonus and a dividend bonus on the property program, once they get two, three, four years of history in there. So it'll all work something very similar to the other ones at that time. So it's, you know, trying to put it out there as close of a comparison as the apples to apples as we can, but it's, it's kinda hard to do that.
No, why'd you really put it out there, a lot of liability things?
Yeah, the liability is such a huge portion, and that's, that's the largest portion actually of the overall premium.
The seventeen-eighteen, sorry. The seventeen-eighteen, is that current, or is that projected?
No, that's what they've already factored in this year, so we'll get that.
They, it's projected.
No, that'll be, usually whatever they're projecting is gonna be, they've already calculated it, so that's what we'll get this year, it'll come in probably, one check will come in sometime in January, and one of them will come in May.
Okay.
So that's, we know for sure we'll get that amount coming in on seventeen-eighteen year.
In dealing with them in the past, with the workers' comp and the safety policy, it's been obvious with these safety and longevity bonuses, you'd say it's pretty substantial. And with Mr. Manning talking with ACCA, that's what they plan to do with property coming up, I'd hate for us to change and lose the bonuses potential that's there, we need one more year, don't we, Mr. Manning, to get three years in? It'd be my recommendation to go with ACCA.
And looking at all the information, that's why I tried to throw as much information out there at the time for you guys to look at, and I've got the original quotes and policies and all in there on my desk, if you care, you know, and looked at, but these are the exact numbers.
Well, if you look at the, take the liability totally off of it, you add the ACC's other numbers up, and then you subtract the projected longevity bonus and the thirty-two, you're still coming up about seventeen, eighteen thousand short or less for ACCA.
Right, and another thing to consider in that overall package, like I had mentioned, with property just being in its second year, they, their this year in their meetings, their insurance meeting, they're putting forward the safety bonus portion of adding that into the property insurance section also, and then he said next year they're planning on doing an overall package bonus for the counties that are in all of the funds. So, you know, we have no way of knowing what that'll be, but it'll be some type of a package deal for all of the counties that got into these funds originally.
Basically, two-thirds of counties are involved anyhow, aren't they?
Yes, sir, forty-three out of sixty-seven is using ACCA for all the liability and all the property.
Seventeen-eighteen, so.
Any other place you said other than...
We got this, I got chaplained in, but he's talking about the other three years to have the longevity thing.
Yeah, you can see that third year is substantial.
So that's what that one is.
Premiums.
Yeah.
You know, it doesn't tell the story.
Well, that's why I said when I laid that...
Well, that's why I subtracted all of it, you did on your calculator.
When I laid that outside to the side, I just wanted to footnote that ACCA does not have the discount, it does for that in there, so just keep that in mind as you look at that.
Any more discussion about this? Well, if there's no more discussion, we'll place this on the agenda for the next commission meeting. Next thing we have is amend job classification description for the EMA director. And you'll have this in your packet as well. This is basically the same thing we did for the EMA director's position, the old job description dates back to nineteen ninety, and a good bit of stuff that changed at that time. So this basically is putting it in line with today's business. And the, change the description, currently, this job says Assistant Director, and I'm presenting to change that to Deputy Director. And with this, that would be, if you're Assistant, you assist the director in what he does, but if you're Deputy Director, you can perform the duties of the director in his absence. And I ask that that change be made along with the job description. Any more discussion concerning this? If there's no objection, we'll place this on the agenda for the next commission meeting. The next thing we have is Safety Coordinator Resolution, this is also in your packet, and this is requirement of ACCA, and I was the Safety Coordinator as EMA Director, and so we're passing it on down to the new EMA Director. This is just a full mouthy, but they needed in writing, and this is to get that, one of the ten steps to get that safety bonus that we just talked about. So if there's no objection, we will place this on the agenda for the next commission meeting. The next thing is point of contact for Homeland Security. Again, this is a job that falls under the EMA directors, and I had that before, and they would just need in writing, come to commission, they would need point of contact to be Homeland Security, and this person will be able to sign off on grants and so on. So if there's no objection, we'll place this on the agenda for the next commission meeting. The next thing is point of contact for Homeland Security. Again, this is a job that falls under the EMA directors, and I had that before, and they would just need in writing, come to commission, they would need point of contact to be Homeland Security, and this person will be able to sign off on grants and so on. So if there's no objection, we'll place this on the agenda for next commission meeting. Next thing, we have amend job classifications. Okay, we have one employee at the park that I think that inadvertently his classification was in error, he's a grade twelve, step eleven, and I asked that we move that to a grade thirteen.
That's the department head, and all other department heads are...
Are grade thirteen.
Grade thirteen.
Right. Thirteen step one.
So I just want to classify, right to start with, that's your plan?
Yes.
Yeah, we done all this at one time, there was two hundred and something employees, and I mean, we knew we were gonna make some mistake, and that was corrected four or five, all at one time, a year or so ago, I don't remember when it was.
Okay, thirteen step one.
That was a good that, too.
Okay, Jason, you want to talk about that one at Solid Waste?
Yeah, we have the mechanic at Solid Waste, and mechanic at Public Works, mechanic at Public Works is a grade ten, and he's off the chart on scale because of several of his, you know, when we done these, we kind of tried to flash by each job, and the mechanic at Solid Waste was put at a grade seven, the guy that works with him, assistant, assistant mechanic, whatever his job level is, he's also at a seven, so the guy in charge is at a grade seven with the guy right next to him, and then Public Works, you know, he's three grades above him, so I wanted everybody with that, you know, I encourage you to call and talk to the department head, the employee, but I feel like we made a mistake there, you know, it needs to be looked at.
You know if he's a seven, what?
Uh, seven, let's see, I have it right here.
He's in a grade seven, step thirteen.
And the only, I had both department heads write me out what they felt like those two individuals' responsibilities were, probably the other and none of that, but the major difference that I think, or major differences I think, was on equipment, you know, Public Works, they have a lot more pieces of equipment as far as, you know, from tractors to bulldozers to road vehicles and different pieces of equipment, whereas Solid Waste, you know, they've got pretty much dump trucks, garbage trucks, drill off, so there's not as much equipment there. But the Solid Waste, you know, when they have a piece of equipment down, it's got a route, and it's gotta get fixed and get back out on the route, where Public Works, you know, we can move on and do something else till we get that piece of equipment fixed, a lot of times, it may shut down a job that we're working on, but it doesn't shut the man down, in that other word. And then the other major difference, the mechanic at Public Works is a shop foreman, he's got responsibilities over employees, you know, has disciplinary responsibilities and stuff, whereas I don't think that's the case at Solid Waste, so that needs to either be taken into consideration, or that responsibility needs to be applied to that job description.
Okay, and what are we looking at moving at the step?
Well, that's something we need to decide, I, you know...
Now, what step is he on right now?
Seven first one.
Seven first one.
Task at Public Works.
Yes.
Not sanitation.
Sanitation, right.
That's something, you know...
And the person you're talking about at Public Works is a what?
Uh, he's a grade ten, but he's off the chart as far as where he shows up on the chart.
So I get fifteen, something like that.
Yeah, I can't remember what the exact hour they pay you to get off of, he's off of the chart on right this. I mean, this was hard to put together and keep everybody in their qualification, you know...
Right.
But that's something that, you know, I was going for y'all to look at as well, and do some investigating on your own, and, you know, like, put it on that, and there's something for you.
You think you deserve to have something by next week, and it'll be on the eighth?
What was that again?
I was asking Mike if he thought he could have his, you know, he wanted to talk to him or anything, and we could have it on the eighth, or we need to put it off to the next time.
What is your suggestion, Jason?
I would be willing to make, ready to make a recommendation next week, but, you know, everybody's...
What are you looking at?
Uh, well...
Like a, like a, a grade ten?
Well, in my opinion, unless they have the same responsibilities for employees under them, I would think they would need to be a grade nine.
That's what I'm saying.
In a, you know, I don't know what step, but a grade nine. If the responsibilities were added to him and to his job description, I would feel comfortable going to a ten, I just don't feel comfortable going to a ten unless, you know, he has that responsibility.
Well, this assistant and everything, did you think to ask Daryl if he tells him what to do?
He does, but...
Even though he doesn't have the disciplinary...
He orders, he orders parts, and, I mean, the job, they do pretty much the same.
But I mean, does he sit there and say, you need to go out and fix this, or we go out and fix it?
Yeah, he manages their day-to-day operations and in the shop.
Maybe that needs to be added to his job description if he's gonna be telling people what to do.
And it may be, I haven't researched.
Okay, that's something we need to...
That's what I do. Well, this other one here is a ten, off the chart, is what we're saying, huh?
Yeah, he's a ten, but when we established this pay scale, he was already getting paid more than what the ten classification allowed him.
We're not saying equally on the steps, just equally on the level over here.
Yeah, the Public Works employee is a very senior employee, he's a lot of his service.
Yeah, the mechanic at Public Works had been here since ninety-four or five, or something, I can't remember, and the mechanic at Solid Waste is, I don't remember, oh, five or something, he had a lot less time.
They would've got those three percent increases all over years.
Increases all over years.
Any more discussion concerning this? Well, if there's no more discussion, if there's no objection, we'll place this on the agenda for the next commission meeting.
Now, it's table for me to...
Right, right. The next thing we have is the Heritage Company, and we all have that in the packet, and this gentleman came to see me about two weeks ago, and I didn't know, I wasn't familiar with it at all, the Heritage Company, and basically, this is a book that's given to survivors from someone who passes away at a funeral. Very nice leather-bound book, and it's got people that have sponsored this book, and it shows, and the current one that's out there, Jackson County Commission along with several other people, and I didn't, it's my first knowing that this was even something that was out there, and you'll see on the front page where it's marked, two annual payments, it's a pretty good payment, and I tried to contact Mr. Hodges about this in the past, and I didn't get, I didn't make conversation with him. Tim, you and Jason, remember anything about this?
I do, no.
I don't either. I don't have any recollection of this, of any kind, of this ever being anything, that it mean it wasn't.
Right.
I don't have no recollection of it.
Right.
Looks like I would've, one of us would've remembered.
I mean, this is a different situation, but it's very similar to, you know, the signs we put at gyms and on the baseball field and stuff like that, and we've always had that kind of stuff out on our own personal dollars, right?
So you got my share of this?
I would remember this.
You got my share of this one?
I promise.
Yeah, it's, I think I told you when we talked about it, I think I remember choking that up.
I don't, I don't own hand on this.
I got that one either.
I don't, I don't.
I believe it's out of the county files. So y'all's answer is I don't recollect. I don't recollect.
I would definitely recollect next year when it comes around.
So there's no obligation, we'll place this on the agenda for the next commission. Next we have a report from the staff, Mr. Arnold?
I actually asked to be on, but as you know, I didn't get in time, because I called in, I was late, but I was coming to these. I think he was wanting to, I was thinking that I asked you guys, but Ms. Gilbert and Mr. Sis, I don't think y'all were here at the time, this is, was passed back in, it's been over twenty years ago, it's a local law that was passed saying that we charge two dollars per day, per person, so y'all remember this, for anybody that's late, so the Freedom Commission, of course, Mr. Bennett and Mr. Guthrie was here, I came and I asked that that be taken off, because it's really at the county commission's discretion, it says you may charge two dollars, because I just feel like it's unfair at the time.
You guys are starting a year.
Okay, y'all were, I couldn't remember, okay.
By so long.
Of course, y'all explained to me that you just can't afford to, and I perfectly understand that, that's fine, but looking at the law closer, we've not been implementing the way that the law was written, it says that the revenue commissioner, or the official that collects it, I'm supposed to collect, I'm supposed to keep an administrative fee, so I wasn't real sure, and like I told y'all before, we're the only county in the whole state that does it, so there's nobody I could ask, you know, so I contacted Mr. Marshall, the Attorney General's office, and that's the opinion he sent me, that I am supposed to keep an administrative fee, but he couldn't tell me how much the administrative fee is, he said that's to be decided between me and the county commission. I know we've got some other fees that are five percent, and I think there's some fees that you guys collect, maybe from, see, the Scottsboro something, that's five percent, so really, for twenty years, we're supposed to be collecting this fee, and it's supposed to go to the operate, it's not a discretionary, I mean, it's not a, well, it ain't, it's not a discretionary fund, but it's supposed to go into my budget or into a fund to use to run my office, or actually use to offset any fee, any cost that it costs me to collect this two dollars for that. So I'm asking, I don't think there's no question about whether I'm supposed to keep it, I think it's more a question with you guys is how much I can, if you'll notice it's on, I'm sorry, I apologize, we had a really busy day, it's the end of the year of taxes. So it's on page three, the last part of that, section B of that law, it says, "The proceeds of additional penalty of the county at war and taxes imposed by this tax, less cost of administration shall be deposited in the county general fund for general county government operations."
So what are you asking, you asking to quit doing the two dollars?
No, no, I'm not asking that, I'm saying, I was just reminding y'all that's what it was, you know, I asked you a year ago to stop.
Right.
Again, I'll just, like I said a year ago, I don't think it's fair, it penalizes the poorest people in our county, the people that don't have the money to come pay their taxes on time is who it's penalizing, but it also generates anywhere from a hundred and thirty to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year revenue for the county, and our county's in a situation right now, I understand we can't really afford to do without that, this, y'all expressed to me that you would like to take it off, but we just can't afford to right now, but I'm saying, in looking at it further, you know, I'm depositing a hundred percent of it into the general fund, and a portion of it I'm supposed to deposit into, for instance, Bob can tell you, we set up an account, there's a small discretionary fund that I have, that's, I don't even remember which one it was, Bob might remember, but we set up a fund that that goes into, and if I need to spend that money on office supplies, what I like to use this money for is to upgrade hardware, you know, every year if I need computers or need to do anything with, with any kind of office supplies or something like that.
What percentage do you feel, you know more, what time you spend?
Yeah, I tell you, I think five percent is fair, because five percent is pretty standard, like I said, I think five percent is what y'all keep of that money you send to the county, I mean, to the city, and I've got other discretionary funds, they're small, but they're five percent. I'd really like to ask this year that you let me do ten percent, because like I said, it's been twenty years, we've never, we've never got anything off of, it's all went to the general fund, but I'd like to ask that y'all let me do ten percent this year, and then that'll make up for the two years I've been in office that we haven't collected it, and then from then on out, I'll do five percent.
Would you do me a favor and bring this back up?
Sure.
At, I mean, this part, we'll go ahead and settle, but as far as collecting it, bring it back to the budget, when we started budget, I can handle that.
Well, like I explained to y'all before, it's, it's really stressful on, not just me, but my office, because you got these people, like I said, the poorest people in the county that come in late.
I agree with you.
And if you're, if you're five days late, and you got five parcels, that's, you know, you owe the county a lot of money, just don't make peace.
Yeah, I agree with you, and there's no cap.
Well, at the tax, I mean, you know, finally when the tax bill is, there's a cap.
That's the part I hate to see, is the people that's disabled can't do it, but there's also a lot on that list that can do it.
Yeah, it was, it was started back in, I can't remember what year, though.
And you gotta, you gotta put something out there and make them realize, hey, you paid the fee, or...
If you don't, if you don't, so then I'll just keep on and on and not pay it until tax.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, because I look across that list, some of them's on there, they got, they got funds to pay it with. Some of them's on there, they got, they got funds to pay it with.
There should be a cap on it at, at the, at the least and, um, you know, we passed the, spaced the budget with twenty thousand dollars, you know, in the white circle, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I fully understand not taking, that you can't take it off right now. I, I hope the county gets into this place in the future where we do take off. Us in the cab is the only county's out of sixty-seven. The cab, the cab has a dollar per day and theirs goes to the water. I mean, all that day, it goes to the wa, water departments. You know, ours just goes in the general fund and right now, the general fund needs it, I understand that, but.
Of course, a lot of other counties just had a comment in there too. A lot of other counties have money going to the general fund.
Yeah.
From other sources and Jackson County has none, so.
Yeah, I, I understand we need.
It's hard to compare apples to apples when it's sixty-seven counties and the way different counties, uh, water.
No, I perfectly understand that, but we're penalizing the people that.
Yeah, I understand.
We're penalizing the people that can't afford to pay the two dollars per day.
I agree. And I, I want to look at it again when it comes back to budget side.
But besides that, like I said, I was just bringing that up to remind you, this is what I'm talking about. But in further reading the law, it was, I don't know if it was just not implemented right back in the, I, I don't even know exactly. It might have been eighty-eight, eighty-nine, somewhere around there that it was, it was passed. But, but it, if you, you read there and you read the, Steve's, uh, opinion, he plainly says, yes, I'm supposed to get administrative fee. But he just says, it's up to, it's up to me and you, me and the county commission to decide how much that administrative fee is.
I wouldn't be opposed to, you know, hook you later.
Yeah, that'd be my recommendation, do ten this year and five the next.
And just, just to go back, I look back several years, it's been anywhere from a hundred and, last year it was a hundred and thirty, uh, a few years back is a hundred and sixty. So it's going to fluctuate anywhere between a hundred and thirty thousand, uh, a hundred and sixty thousand.
There's something about mine, I think about it before, I think it averaged three years, I think it was a hundred and forty-four thousand or something up there.
I, I first, when I first got elected, that's the first thing I did was I asked, uh, Mr. Hodges. I said, let's take this off, it's not fair, you know, and he said, yeah, you definitely just take it off. But then once you guys got in office and you realized, hey, we're broke, you know, he, he told me, he said, we just can't, we just can't take it off right now.
When I was in Prazza, we had a guy who had a three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar late lot and wanted to pay his taxes. And he was charging two dollars a day. That's, that's pretty cheap.
I think it was one out there around close to Henninger. Hold it, hold it right by it or something and they owe us a bunch of money, one of them.
Palamine.
Palamine.
Yeah, that, that wasn't nothing to do with this, that was on a bank, but they didn't file correctly, that's right, yeah. Yeah, we, we finally settled that, that case, so, yeah.
Well, if there's no further discussion, there's no objection, we'll place it on the agenda for the next commission meeting.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeff.
I'm gonna go back and see if I can check it.
Do we get five percent of that?
I think I'll get a lot more than that. We can get a five percent.
Ms. Campbell, do you have anything? Ms. Porter, do you have anything?
No, thanks.
Now, we're here from the commission. Ms. Gilbert, do you have anything?
Uh, we just need to check into putting that insurance or that fee for those grants back on the next meeting to talk about or something.
Okay. You talking about that one, it's three thousand dollars?
Yes.
You want that to come up as a motion at the next meeting?
You guys can. Yeah, we can discuss that.
Some of those, you do?
Yeah.
We can have a discussion and then put it up for a motion.
Make it short because low.
Yeah.
I'm planning, being about nine o'clock. You have anything?
Hey, man, I want to go back and change this one eight, one eight, one eight, one eight, one eight, one eight to next week. I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm very.
No, I'm, I'm fine.
Ms. Venable? Ms. Guthrie? Well, that concludes everything we have on the agenda for today's work session. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion.
You have a motion, you have a second? Yeah, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Meeting adjourned.